Special permit for the Borrego Project Solar Energy Generating Facility, 2.795 megawatts, at 136, 138, and 140 Main Street in Byfield. This is a continuance of a special permit application. I just want to go over this. Anybody who wants to get a copy of this. The Board of Selectmen in May of last year, or town meeting, at the town meeting last year, designated the planning board to be in charge of solar arrays. We had our first application, was submitted to us by the planning on June 17th by Borrego. By June 18th, the application was filed at the town clerk. Public hearing was opened on July 15th. Public hearing continuances were on August 19th, September 16th, October 21st, December 2nd, and December 16th. There were continuances when it was not opened, oh, excuse me, they were not opened because of requests from the applicant on the January 20th meeting, the March 2nd meeting, the April 6th meeting, and the May 4th meeting. We held site walks on July 28th, September 23rd to choose the location for the mockups, November 4th to view the mockups, November 28th and 29th to view the mockups again. The Conservation Commission has recorded their conditions. Building Department has not, but their comments were due to us on July 13th. And, B O S H, oh, I see, they just think so. So, other conditions, Conservation Commission Order of Conditions was issued on September 30th, 2015. Request for superseding order of conditions submitted to DEP, October 14th, 2015.
I'm sorry?
And DEP information request number two, which I think you've all seen, there were two of them from DEP that basically, one was dated December 15th, which we had just before our last meeting, and the most recent one, which was April 28th, which really is the subject of what we want to talk about tonight, as the most important thing that we need to resolve. And that is, where are we with DEP? And where is DEP with Borrego relative to this project? So with that, I'm going to ask the applicant, because he's supposed to be responding to the latest DEP letter, to step forward and give us your information about how these issues are being addressed.
Yep. And I can tell you, it was a long delay getting them from DEP. We got our information to DEP in a timely fashion, then they had 40 days to respond to our information. They took 40. We called them. They said, "Give us three more weeks, please." So we did. Then we called them after that, and we didn't have anything. And apparently, their reviewer had pneumonia, so we had another week and a half. And that, that's what caused the delay. So they actually took almost twice as long as they were supposed to respond to the information we gave them.
So you don't have anything now, the latest?
We do. We have new requests for information.
Yeah, that was a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah.
A few weeks back.
And I can-
Have you gone back to them yet?
I have not gone back to them yet.
Okay. So that request for information is pending, still unfulfilled at this point?
It is still pending. Yep. We have not sent anything back yet.
Okay.
And I guess I can go over with the board, item by item. I'd say 85% has to do with the hydrology of the site. There's a few other issues that they had that we can discuss. I'm not sure if you wanted me to go into the details of hydrology, and weir design, outlet design, tailwater versus free flow, and things like that.
Well, I think it's up to board members, but I think the concern that we have is that when DEP returned the letter finally on April 28th, they raised 17 points about stormwater and the calculations. And then they raised other points about the buffer zone and the size of the array. And so, to the extent that you can, because I know that you're asking for some kind of conditional approval-
Yep.
-that I think that you would need to go over the extent to which you think you can answer those.
Okay. I can tell you that for stormwater and addressing those issues, we did not extend the system out. I think we could make all the requests work within the fenced area. We would not be proposing to move the system out of the fenced area. We would stay within the fenced area, and we can make the requests work.
So why don't you go over to that and just show us again what the fenced area is?
That's nice.
Yep.
That's just a matter of, is that just as bright as you can get it?
Well, with the lights going off, it would be better.
All right, well, okay, that helps.
So the fenced area is here, it's actually a black line, but you can see that the panels would not move out of that fenced area, would stay within it. There was a comment that we have some infiltration basins, which are shown in blue, within the buffer. That's more than I need for infiltration. I can take those out and make those rain gardens, so that we're not infiltrating within the buffer. And I can move these outside of the rainfall buffer. So, we can make this whole stormwater design work within the fenced area. And as far as maintenance of these, I know that was a comment too, and that may be a concern, but we're required on this site to mow around and underneath the panels, so there's access all around. So maintaining that would not be difficult. But looking at all their, most of their other issues, it's really adding detail to the plan, as far as stormwater. In addressing methodology of stormwater, there's stuff that you guys don't need to get into, I don't think.
Well, we do, only to the extent that you're asking us to do something without a DEP approval in front of us.
Right.
And that's a great concern, because it was one of the major issues in this entire project. By the way, Martha, if we're not going to use this again, maybe we should just put the lights back on.
Okay.
What do you think? Do you need to add that again, or no? Let's just put the lights back on. So I think the concern is, yeah, is that you saying that you're going to do something within a given period of time doesn't give us DEP agreeing to that. We don't know.
Right. What I can tell you now is that they're asking us to do some infiltration tests, which is fieldwork. They're asking us to do more detailed survey work, which takes time, which we don't have enough time now to do that. I wish we did, but I can tell you that in modifying our plans, there's no way we would go outside of the fence with any of our stormwater systems or the modules themselves, even if the system gets smaller within the fence. That'd be the only thing we could do, keep it the same or smaller.
I'm confused with that. The colored areas, which you say are the proposed rain gardens, have, were raised in them?
Yep, they can.
They can?
Yep.
Okay, that's okay with DEP?
Yes. Well, it's, yeah, it's fine with them. They're only two and a half inch-
I understand.
Yep.
Yeah.
Nope, they didn't have a concern.
So the large issue that they raised in their December 15th letter of the pervious versus impervious, what exactly, how they come down on that?
They haven't issued anything exactly, still.
So if they, but would seem-
But it wouldn't get any worse, because I modeled it, I modeled those as unconnected impervious.
Which is what DEP wanted.
Yeah, that's what they asked. And that, that's-
You did that in your response to them in December?
Yes. So they've seen that. Now I'm going to modify based on the new, which, taking into consideration all that extra work.
Okay. So then in their letter, they do acknowledge that the stormwater design has been changed, but they still are raising issues about whether it was directed in the proper way and whether your gradients were correct, and a number of other things that they raise in these 17 points.
Right. And it's stuff that we can detail on.
The, so, some of the more specific ones that they call out, in their opinion, aside from the 17, are that your pre-development conditions using the curve number for woods as good condition versus fair, and then the post-development condition. How do you propose to address that?
The pre-development condition I can agree with, the post-development condition I somewhat don't agree with, because they say you should model it as fair open space, which is 50 to 75%, established grass. We can't get a certificate of compliance until it's over 75%. So I'd argue with them that it has to be, I would argue with them on that ground over.
The issue which is the stream crossing?
They're just asking for more detail, and that will require more survey work in that area, just so we get all the, where that's exactly crossing.
I mean, board members jumped in for any questions you might have, but I do have a couple of more that are part of that, but I think the major question I have is that they are still requesting that you decrease the size of the project.
I don't think they're requesting that we decrease this. It says that, but we talks to them about that, and they say they have a concern about the amount of trees that we're cutting. And it's just, I don't know, maybe K V can speak to that. He actually spoke with the supervisor there about that issue specifically.
Yeah, so I, I saw that-
Name and a-
K V is there, 138 Main Street. I called the supervisor, I think it's Phil, Phil's boss.
Right.
So I spoke to her, asked her specifically around the 13 acres and said, you know, "Look, we reduced this already from 16 and a half down to like 13 and a half." And she explicitly said, "This is not a concern around acreage, this is a concern around wetlands. So your job is to address the wetlands within the 25 to 50-foot buffer. It's not specifically an acreage issue." So because, you know, I saw that, the first thing I said, "Well, we've already reduced this, is this, has to do with acreage?" And she said, "No." So this is mainly around that 25 to 50-foot buffer, which we're going to address.
Well, I mean, the sentence really is, "Mass DEP is concerned with the large extent of clearing associated with the proposed project, and requests a reduction in clearing of mature vegetation." So that's a little more than just wetlands concern, it seems to me.
Well, I think we've been talking with them, I don't think they realize where this came from and how much we did reduce it, and that the town has a 25-foot no-cut buffer we're allowing for. Typically in a town, you're allowed to clear up to the 50-foot. So we're, we were adhering to the town's regulations.
Okay.
George?
I'm just conflicted, we don't have anybody from DEP here, so we really can't say, "What do you think the situation is?" And it seems to be, it could be conflicted, and that's bothering me a little bit. I don't know what the answer is.
Just a question I have for the board, and sorry, Zach Park is Borrego. The question I have is, I understand the desire to get to the bottom of all these questions, but do you guys not feel protected by DEP, in that they can't make the DEP happy? And NOI will be overwhelmed, and will not be able to build the project at all?
Right.
So I'm just having a little trouble understanding-
Well, because you're asking for us to make a conditional approval, and we don't know enough about what that condition is. I mean, that's my opinion.
Is the condition not a superseding order, is that the DEP approves?
Well, we don't know what they're going to say when you go back and negotiate with them.
So I guess that's my thought, that, I brought up the word "trust," maybe it's not accurate, but I would expect it, I'd like to see the board put faith in DEP to make sure that, first of all, the Conservation Commission provided us with the NOI. It was appealed, a superseding order of conditions is in process. If we can never get that, as in if we can't satisfy the state body overseeing the Conservation Commission, who focuses on this jurisdiction-
Right.
-is that not protection enough for the board to say that we need to provide, we need to get to that superseding order of conditions, if I think it's fair for you guys to put in that condition, not only get that superseding order, but if there's any major, major plan changes, that we can come back to you guys?
Zach, I think-
Can I make a comment?
Yeah, Jim?
Yeah, I'm concerned too, particularly with the sentence, it says, "Alternatives to clearing 13.5 acres include a reduction in scope of the project." So that suggests to me that we don't have a 100% defined scope of this project. So if the scope changes, then a conditional approval, it just doesn't fit with something that's still moving.
Even if we're talking about, kind of today, we'll call it, is the maximum impact to the site, that the reduction would only impact, would result in a reduction of our impact. And I think that would be something you guys could get comfortable with, but again, that's just my-
Well, look.
I was going to echo what Jim had said, in the sense that I feel like I'm being asked to approve something, and yet I don't know what I'm being asked to approve, and that based on what the DEP has said, the plan may or may not change. We don't know that, and if it changes, we don't know how it's going to change. So, to me, it's not a matter of trust or being protected by DEP or the decision in place, but you're asking this board to make a decision on something, but we don't know what the final product is going to be yet.
Sure, neither do we, and I feel like that's where the protection comes in. If there is any type of major change to the plan, we're obligated already to come back here, so there's a final gate of protection in the building permit and the electrical permit that we need to get. The building inspector, of course, is going to go through all the documents, Conservation Commission, superseding order, planning board, all conditions will have to be met in that building, building plan we submit to the building inspector's department.
And I'm feeling a lack of information to even put condition, for us to put various conditions in place, because I don't, I don't know what, I don't know what those conditions would be until I see what the plan is.
Yeah, I guess if we, if we can't help you guys with conditions that are approved by the DEP, yes, it's a general statement, but understanding that it is the DEP kind of protecting the site, I agree, it's certainly very challenging for us to even help you guys get to that position.
Joe?
Yep. I've got it, on the one hand, and on the other hand. On the one hand, from a purely practical standpoint, the DEP's superseding order, when it comes, will be a case of case or a sira. However, on the other hand, I understand totally, what I'm hearing is most of the board's concern about buying a pig in the poke, and I would support that. I don't have that concern that you do, but I have concerns on other issues that I feel are not resolved to my satisfaction.
Well, let's get into those.
Yeah, but in terms of-
Because I, I have concerns about stormwater-
Yeah.
-but I have concerns about the landscape plan-
Yeah.
-and I have concerns about the O and M plan.
Okay.
So there's enough, there's enough things that are not resolved, that can be, by the way, as far as I'm concerned. But I'd be surprised if we can resolve them tonight.
I don't see any way of resolving mine. We can get a direction, maybe. My concern is, if I can state it now, is the visibility issue. Okay? Clearly, the reason we have these is to try to, whether it's appreciated or not, to try to tailor our decision around the specific concerns and the specific conditions of the people that will be affected. Okay? It's clearly a big deal that their property not be devalued by this thing, and one can understand that. What I'm hearing, because I'm not a real estate person, what I'm hearing is, if you can't see it, it's not a problem, if you can see it, it is a problem. So I'm saying we damn well better be not able to see it.
Right.
Which leads to, we can't help that, that's nothing that can be done, which leads to the discussion we had before, relative to an arborist. I can't remember which of the neighbors had suggested that. Somebody did.
Gene.
Pardon?
Gene.
Gene did, okay. Did we bring an arborist in? I agree with that. I got a buddy to walk me through, and he had suggestions. There are some conflicts in those suggestions with other people's opinions, and I would dearly love to see an arborist talk on the two issues of the viability of species. In fact, one of them, for example, there's a parasite that's going crazy at the moment, the wooly adelgat, I can never pronounce that right. They're after hemlocks, and hemlock is clearly a problem. That was my guy, not, these guys didn't suggest it, my guy did. So that's a cause of concern. I think the viability and the ability to screen it appropriately.
Right. So luckily, Martha sent us a copy of the December 20th meeting, 20th?
Yeah.
16.
And in that, we, the board, Borrego and the community went at that in quite a bit of detail.
Yeah.
Probably two to three pages worth of what we would do. And that was the opinion of the board, that the plan that was set before us-
Yeah.
-which called for arborvitae between-
Yeah.
-eight and 10 feet, and junipers of six to eight, and white pine of two feet-
Right.
-was inadequate.
Yep.
And that what we wanted to do was develop a plan, and based on our experience that we've had recently, by the way, on landscaping, getting developers tied down, we want this tied down.
Sure.
We don't want it to be, "Well, we'll work on this in the future." We want a plan that will come with us and will be approvable-
Yeah.
-and then as part of that plan, we'll have a maintenance program, and also bringing, if it is an arborist, to make sure that what's planted in the first place is correct. Now Borrego has said they're willing to do these kinds of things-
Which I appreciate.
Right?
Yeah.
The problem is, we don't have a plan before us.
Yeah.
So-
I don't think we can legitimately approve, I can't legitimately vote to approve-
Right.
-on something that, yeah, we'll take care of it later.
Right.
However much I feel comfortable with that statement, and nonetheless, I'm not going to be here later, some of you others may not be here later, you know, when it finally happens.
And then I think the final one, well, it might be more, but the O and M plan, which was sent by Steve on February 2nd, is clearly just a generic plan, and there's nothing specific in there about this site. And we went back and forth on this at the last meeting, and in that discussion, we started with the idea that it would be done before the building permit was given by the building, building commissioner. But I think that we settled that thing out, that we needed to have a lot more before even the special permit would be, would be given. And so right now, that's not, that's just out there as a draft document.
Do you agree that's-
So I think that all these things can be done, Steve.
Yeah.
I just think that you can't get them done tonight.
Yep. And I think we had time, and we wish we did, we would do it. But I think Zach can explain why the time crunch. And I wish we-
Well, this is an important thing for us, obviously. We've tried to do our own research to find out-
And I, I wish we weren't here, but it's the situation we're in. I wish we had more time, but we don't.
So then, do you want to explain what, what that it is, so we can understand it?
Yeah, sure.
Get close.
Oddly for me, I'd really like to know what you're saying. I know it's a pain, but hey.
So on April, everyone's known, we've kind of touched on this a number of times over the past year, that the net metering caps have been hit in National Grid territory, which means no new projects can be interconnected in National Grid, which obviously means that no developer is going to build a $7 million project like this at risk. So a lot of, the risk work we've been doing is development work like this, permitting work. So after 14 months of the cap being hit, the Governor Baker signed into law on April 11th-
Right.
-House Bill 4173. The bill did a number of things, it was 100% focused on net metering, but the two major things that happened was, it increased the caps by 3% for public and 3% for private. So now the total net metering cap in the Commonwealth is 7% for private, 8% for pub, for public, excuse me. 7% and 8% is of the total max load of the systems, of the utilities. So you get a total load in Massachusetts multiplied by 15%, that's the total megawatts of solar, I should say, distributed generation that can be installed. The reason there's a net metering cap is that the utilities are nervous with all this DG coming on, there's intermittency issues, duct curve issues, that type of stuff that's way, way into the weeds. But the point is, it's a new technology, we don't want too much going in at an uncontrolled rate. So these caps have slowly been increased as more and more solar's been developed, constructed, and interconnected. So on April 11th, we lifted 3% each on both caps. That made room for this project to move forward. As you can imagine, a pound of flesh kind of had to be given to the DPU to allow for more net metering to be allowed. And again, among other things, the major give that the solar industry agreed to was that private net metering facilities would receive a 40% reduction in the value of the net metering credits, the value of the electricity produced, the commodity we produce for a private project. And private is defined, private and public is defined by the type of off-taker you have. In this case, we've very openly told you we're doing a community solar project, community solar made up of residents is inherently private. So there's a 40% reduction in the value of the energy we produce. So what happens is, there's two revenue streams for a project, and I think we went over this probably a long time ago, a year ago. Two revenue streams, one is SREC, the other is net metering, or kilowatt hour production, electricity commodity sales. There are two deadlines. The first one for SREC is a project must be mechanically complete by January 7th, 2017, 2018? No, 17, sorry, 2017.
What's, January?
January 7th. The project must be mechanically complete in order to qualify for the SREC II program. Okay? So we've already got kind of a construction schedule timeline here that we're up against.
Does that mean it has to be up and running, or just constructed?
Mechanically complete means everything's done except for the utility work. Utilities have no incentive to get us interconnected, they're going to take their time. So what the DOEAR did is kind of separated, all right, developers, EPCs, this is the construction that you guys control, so get to that point by January 7th, and you'll grandfather your project for the current incentive program. The other side of it is net metering. So back to the bill, the bill was signed on April 11th, the bill goes into law on May 11th. That's today.
Today.
That pound of flesh, that new net metering credit, that 40% reduction is not spelled out in the bill. The bill directs the Department of Public Utilities to, to use a metaphor, to draw a line between what gets the old treatment and what gets the new treatment. The entire industry, as well as Borrego, is very much of the belief that today's the day. They're not going to go backwards, they're never going to do a retrospective kind of thing, because the bill actually protects grandfathered projects, and in order for it to be forward, to be somewhere in the future, is going to be very, very, you know, hopeful thinking, especially when this control, this line, is held by the Department of Public Utilities, the agency that's not particularly sympathetic to solar. So today's the day that the cap actually went into law, there's a bunch of emails that went around from the, from the State House and whatnot. But what we want to do today, the last piece of our puzzle, in order to reserve the treatment under the current, yesterday's net metering program, or today up till midnight, is you need three major development milestones. The first one is site control, and in that case, we have a fully executed, fully active option lease with the SERS. The second is our interconnection services agreement. That interconnection agreement was got, was received over a year ago. We've made over $150,000 in deposit payments to the utility on this to keep the project alive, because the tariff, the interconnection tariff spells out, you have to kind of pay these upgrade fees just to stay alive.
And that's the National Grid?
That's the National Grid. The third is what's called non-ministerial permits, essentially the things that can be voted on. In this case, Conservation Commission, Planning Board, Site Plan Review, Special Permit. We have Conservation Commission, even though it's under appeal, it's been awarded. In this case, the last piece of the puzzle is an affirmative vote from the planning board, and with that, we'll be able to submit our application to what's called the ACA, the Assurance of Cap Allocation, and that reserves our treatment under the current program. Over the year that we've been working with the board and with the neighbors, we've made a lot of concessions to the project, we've made it smaller, we've brought on larger, sorry, I shouldn't say larger, more efficient panels, so we're buying the most expensive panels we can to hold our system size. We've agreed to a pretty aggressive landscape plan that's only going to get more conclusive. We've decided to put a lot of this land in conservation, we've stretched the budget for this project to the very minimum, that we, the project will not be able to absorb a 40% reduction in revenue. And that's why we're putting the undue unfair pressure on the board to decide tonight, because if we do continue tonight, the project's not going to survive anyways.
Say that again, please. If we do continue it tonight, the project is what?
Not going to survive anyhow.
Okay.
So that's why we're coming, that's why we're, we came to you guys last week with such kind of, that aggression, thinking that that last week was our last bite at the apple. Surely today is. And that's, I think, there is a chance that we have more time than today, but I think you guys know how much time and effort, money we've put into this project, we're not willing to take that chance. And I agree, it puts you guys in a tough position, but it's something we have, we have to ask of the board. That was a lot. I mean-
All I, all this going through my, I'm sympathetic with that issue.
Agreed.
Okay. But what's going through my mind is, we're pushing five months of continual requests to extend.
But I think it's Steve, as Steve explained, those five months-
Pardon me?
As Steve explained- As Steve explained, those months that we've continued,
Yeah.
seventy-three days from the DEP to respond to, to provider.
Right, I understand that.
We're doing everything we can, we, we have no intent to...
But there were other issues besides the DEP thing that I think, and that I think could have been resolved during that period. Quite honestly, I, every time I heard, I got an email saying that you'd request it, I was disappointed, because I wanted to move on with those.
Okay.
I'd like to hear from Paul, what his thoughts are and what our obligations are.
My first question would be to Zach, sorry, John. My first question would be to Zach, e- even if the board is, is willing to close the hearing tonight and vote to approve this project with conditions, you're not going to get the decision today. It's not going to be filed with the town clerk, and I would be surprised if you would have a decision filed with the town clerk in under a month and probably longer. Um, you, the board would have to sit down...
Takes a while to write it.
I wouldn't ask that.
Go, go through, well, I understand that. So, I guess my question is, how does just simply an oral vote hold your place in line anyway?
So, in the past, when we've been time constrained, not so much in this case, but to beat a net metering cap in the past, um, often the meeting minutes are published prior to a decision being issued. We've used meeting minutes in the past, which, which has been acceptable. We've also, I know you guys won't have the meeting minutes published either.
Not for another...
So, we brought a simple statement of fact letter that said, today on May 11th, the vote, the board voted and approved the special permit. And we would ask the board to sign that letter, if in fact we do get it. I'm understanding there's some pretty strong headwinds to getting that right now, but that would be the ask, is to vote and sign a statement of fact that obviously we have to have you approve, but it's a two-sentence letter that simply states, as I said.
Okay, I, I mean, that's one issue I was trying to, to wrap my mind around, because legally speaking, the decision is not, it's not final, and it's not an approval until it's been filed with the town clerk's office, which we wouldn't be close to even if the board did vote in favor tonight.
Yep, no, there's, there's an element of risk, but, you know, it is what it is. And as long as the board did vote affirmatively, if you were comfortable in signing that statement of fact, then we could do it. On the other hand, I could, I could write an affidavit to the Department of Public Utilities. That would likely hold less weight than a signature from you guys, but I'll defer to you if we're at that point tonight.
Did you want my opinion with regard to, um, the outstanding issues, you know, that still need to be resolved? I mean, my, my main issue of concern with regard to the stormwater is that the bylaw has a specific requirement that the board make a finding with regard to stormwater. Um, it says adequate provisions for stormwater shall be provided, I'm sorry, adequate provisions shall be provided for stormwater management and other utilities consistent with the functional requirements of the Newbury Storm, Stormwater Rules and Regulations, the Department of Environmental Protection, and the Massachusetts Stormwater Management Handbook. Now, in a, you know, a typical situation, you may have an applicant that hasn't even been in front of the Conservation Commission yet. And what you're going to have is plans that show generally how you would deal with the stormwater. And the board would review those, um, and would be willing to issue a conditional decision that requires you to then go forward and get approval from the Conservation Commission, or subsequently DEP. Um, but that conditional decision would be presumptive upon the fact that the plans aren't going to change. You know, that, that what has been presented to the board does comply. And that all you're asking for in that condition is that you get the confirmation that what the board voted on did comply. Um, the information that's in front of the board now is essentially stating the, the project as currently proposed does not comply, at least as, as DEP sees it. So what you would be asking the board to do is give you an approval of a plan that, that the, the evidence in front of the board says doesn't comply. And I think that that is a difficult position to put the board in, and I think that puts you at some significant risk too. There's some very recent case law, um, in the 40B realm, which, I don't know how familiar you are with Chapter 40B development. But that statute actually allows an applicant to submit only preliminary plans to a Board of Appeals. They don't have to have final design plans, you know, showing with certainty that you're going to complete, comply with certain requirements. And it's very typical in those situations for an applicant to simply rely upon the fact that you were going to get an order of conditions, um, septic approval from Board of Health under Title V, or similar situations. And there's a case out of Stowe, Reynolds v. Stowe, in which the Board of Appeals went through that, you know, normal circumstance, and issued an approval for a comprehensive permit in which there were significant issues raised before the board that suggested that the applicant could not meet the well requirements. And the applicant simply stated, well, we have to get approval from DEP for the wells, so just issue us a conditional decision, which is what the board did. That was appealed to Superior Court. Superior Court upheld the board. That was further appealed to the Appeals Court, and the Appeals Court overturned and said, where, generally that the board would be right. That where there is no evidence in front of it suggesting that you can't comply, you can rely upon the determination of the state agency. But when there is affirmative evidence before the board suggesting that there wouldn't be compliance, the board has an obligation then to do that additional work and, and make sure that it could comply.
Yeah, my response would be that I don't believe there's evidence that we cannot comply. I believe that there's evidence that the plan set as exists today is in need of, is in need of some modification or some additions.
But I guess that's the area where I have concerns. So basically, the plan you're asking the board to approve, the information that we have today says doesn't comply. I don't think anyone doubts that you can bring it into compliance. But they just don't know how you're going to do that, they don't have that evidence in front of them.
Is there no precedent to return to the board to show the plan set after we're done?
There's certainly precedent for that, but generally, that precedent would be where the board has approved a plan set where they believe does comply. And then you go to the Conservation Commission and you get a denial, or there's an appeal to DEP, and DEP says, this doesn't comply, you need to make these changes. Then you come back to the board to say, all right, we didn't get our order, order of conditions, we need to modify your approval.
Yep.
But that, that situation occurs when the plan's in front of the board, when they're voting, the presumption is that they do comply. It's not a situation where you're asking the board to vote for plans that the evidence that is in front of them suggests do not comply.
Yep, no, I understand that notion.
And that, that's what's putting the board in a very difficult situation.
I think to piggyback on that is that even if, even if this wasn't compliance, oh, put it a different way. I think there's been an explicit, if not an implicit acknowledgement by, and I think Steve said it, in terms of acknowledging that the plan will need to change. We just don't know how. And I just, knowing that,
Yep.
it would be one thing, as was just stated, if, if it changed after the fact and we didn't know it, but we know right now that this plan has to change.
Yeah, I think, and the basis of our, our appeal here, probably not the right word, our, our argument here.
Plea.
Plea, thank you. Um, is based on the fact that you guys could get comfort with the thought that the plan as set in front of you now, will, the impact will only be reduced to the site, to the land, to the conscom, from the conscom perspective. And I guess if you guys can't get comfortable with that, I think, I think we, I understand you guys have the, all right to do that. And unfortunately, kind of these type of situations that have, that have incentives and have markets that are, you know, nascent markets that are built up, they drive some, call it artificial behavior, that we're exhibiting now. And I can apologize for it, but I can't change it.
I think Zach, the, the issues are that, that it's, it's that. It's the lack of movement at all on the issue of the landscape plan, when you know it was one of our most important things, but nothing was brought forward to us. Uh, the ONM plan that was sent to us was just a generic plan that really didn't have any details, so... So, I, I mean, I, I personally look at all those together. When I'm, when you're asking for this continuance to say, well, as I said to Steve when he stood up, I said, well, we can solve this, but we can't solve it tonight. I, I mean, I'm sure we could.
Yep.
But you're asking us to make a decision tonight, and I think, well, maybe it's time to ask board members what they think.
I mean, I would, I would just like to say, you know, i- if there were a thirty-day continuance, and the applicant came back to the, to the board with a plan that showed, all right, with a modification, to say, this is what we are going to do, even if DEP hasn't ruled on it yet, at least they could say, this is how it complies with what DEP is asking. But you haven't seen that. You only have conceptuals at this point.
Yeah, and I could just say, I wish I had that time.
I, I agree, and I understand, but...
And I feel bad, like, we're putting you in this position, and I feel like we could have addressed those issues in time, but it just don't have it.
Jim?
And I know I could present that plan.
Do you have any thought?
Well, I, I have a concern that goes, I have a very fundamental concern, and that relates to the property values of the, the Butters. And so I go into this with kind of a, you know, less than great enthusiasm. And this issue here just bothers me even more. And it's...
Strong wire, this?
Yeah, yeah. If, if, just a few minutes ago, you said you're putting the board in, under undue and unfair pressure to act tonight. And as a practical matter, if the board were willing to go with a permit with a condition just on Borrego, that's one thing. Because that can be defined, and you can accomplish it. But to put a condition on it that says, very amorphous, saying something that the DEP is going to do, no one can control that. You can't, and we can't. So that makes it very difficult for me to say, I favor this. Really can't.
I agree with the prior comments and the things that I said previously.
We have gone as a board to a lot of trouble to tread the straight and narrow, try to be fair to Borrego, fair to the Butters. And I think, my feeling, my gut feel is, we will be blowing that if we approved it tonight, unconditionally. Actually, from the sound of it, doesn't matter what I think.
I don't think you're ever getting an unconditional decision.
That is what I think. I think we owe it to the town.
Do we do a straw vote, and then close the hearing?
Do we do a straw, how do we, how do we perceive?
Well, I, I think you want to ask the applicant first, I mean, you can do the straw vote, to see...
Do you want a straw vote?
I, I think you've gotten your feedback already.
You'd like one?
Okay.
So, a straw vote?
Oh, wait a second, we're voting to what?
Let, let's, let's, let's phrase it. Want to help phrase it? Uh, you're, to, to adhere to, what, what are you asking for, again, exactly?
I think we'd like a minute just to talk to Kevy, I think the impact here is a little bit greater than...
I don't know what he's asking for. Jesus Christ.
Can we take five minutes to talk to the landowners? Because I think the impact here is that they will have no chance to do it again. Perhaps the, I mean, I'm coming at this from an economic standpoint. There are other solar companies out there, Kevy may want a chance for another solar company to pick up where we left off, that might have, I don't know, lower margin expectations, et cetera, et cetera. So I don't want to kill the project for Kevy if it's dead for Borrego. So, if you guys wouldn't mind.
This is, this is Borrego's application, right?
Doesn't travel with the land?
What is this?
Yeah, I mean, if, if there was another user that wanted to come in, it certainly could be transferred to another user. So if they want to continue and...
That's my implication.
Why don't you take five minutes?
Thank you.
John, uh, I, I wasn't sure. I'm not comfortable voting to deny. I'm comfortable voting to not approve tonight on contingencies.
That's what we do.
I don't, I don't care what they want.
That's what we...
I don't want to approve, to deny it.
We're not ready to, to approve or deny merits.
Okay, good.
We're only, good.
Let me clarify, all right? We, we have to find out what the applicant wants to do.
Yeah.
If the applicant says, we're closing this hearing, we are not going to participate anymore, I think that it is in the best interest of the board to close the hearing.
Yes.
Because otherwise, you wind up in a situation where you don't know where the close of the hearing is, and you could run into a constructive approval.
Yeah, okay.
You don't want that. So if the applicant says, we don't want to move forward, the hearing, we consider the hearing closed, you should close the hearing and then take your vote.
Okay.
Okay, and I presume that would be a vote to deny.
Deny the, the, the...
Deny the project.
Not, deny the...
Once you've closed the hearing, you have to make a determination, either approve it or deny it.
Can the applicant, if they don't want to force a vote and elicit a denial,
They can...
can they withdraw the application?
You, they can request a withdrawal without prejudice, or they can request a continuance. And either Borrego changes their mind and comes back and provides additional information, or they come in with someone who takes over for Borrego and is the new applicant.
Uh, should the motion be a denial, or should the motion be inf... To approve, and then people deny, rather than having a real situation?
Yep. I mean, a lot, a lot of boards prefer it to be a vote in the affirmative.
Yes.
And then if you don't get the votes, it's a denial.
We got anybody to make the motion?
What person to find out what they want to do?
So this is...
Second it.
So you, you're recommending that if they ask us to close the public hearing, that we approve closing the public hearing?
Yes, I don't think you should keep the public hearing, I don't think you should keep the public hearing open over the objection of the applicant. Because then they, they're going to make the claim, the public hearing ended the day we said we will not provide additional information. You don't know then where your ninety-day period for issuing your decision begins. And the last thing you want to do is stumble into...
I just want to clarify.
You don't want to stumble into a constructive approval.
Make sure I understand.
Nobody would be happy with that result.
I don't want to underestimate what they know about the process, Borrego and Kevy know about the process, but does it make sense to share with them when they come back in, what you just shared with us, if they understand what the options are?
Yeah, I think that will be important.
What the implications may be of the various approaches.
Mm-hmm.
They've got a right to know what legal advice we are getting from town council.
Right.
Okay.
Before they make their decision, before they make their decision, not when they watch the tape.
Yeah, not after they've told us to shut down, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
This just makes sense to you folks.
We're still on the air, so I would like to announce, uh, for those of you who do remember Marlene Schrader, uh, she passed away about two or three weeks ago. That on May 21st at 2:00 PM at First Parish Church, 20 High Road, there'll be a memorial service, Marlene. And so that's for people here, that's, is anyone who might, who might be watching.
And when is that?
It's, again, I'll repeat, it's May 21st at 2:00 PM at the First Parish Church at 20 High Road, uh, in Newbury. Okay? And as you, as I indicated last time, Marlene has been an incredible advocate for environmental issues. She served on the Master Plan Committee in 2004, '05, and '06. And is also a member of our Master Plan Committee that we're undergoing right now.
Hi, Alicia Greco. Would you like to make another comment about Philado's master plan?
Oh, the, the questionnaires?
Yep.
Thank you very much. Select woman, uh, Greco has, has, um, come and said, uh, at town meeting two weeks ago, uh, we announced, um, that the, um, Master Plan Committee is soliciting information from all residents on a questionnaire and survey. You can do it either online, or you can do it, uh, with a, a hard copy. We have hard copies here at the Council of Aging and at the library. And the online version is really easy to do, but you need to be driven to it. But if you go to the town's website, uh, you can access it, it's right on the, right on the website now.
Or on the homepage of the news.
It's on the homepage, and it's right there. And if you are adept at using the computer, I strongly suggest you do that, because it's instantly analyzed. And it's just terrific. So we look forward to it. Right, right now, we have over two hundred responses, or over two hundred responses. And, uh, look forward to it. So, thank you. So, the question is, what are you asking us?
Uh, so with your approval, we're going to ask you guys to continue, and we're going to work with Kevy to identify another potential developer for this project, who can maybe close out these final two issues with the board, and this, the issue with DEP.
So how do we, how do, how do we respond to that?
Naturally.
I mean, it's a, it's a request to continue the hearing.
What's he say?
Continue the hearing.
Just to continue.
However, but, but with another, with another...
Well, that hasn't happened at this point. I, I would just treat this as a motion to continue. And if at some point they come to you and say, we want to substitute the applicant from Borrego to another solar developer, um, you deal with that at that point in time.
And I was down there when you started. What are you saying? Uh, what's, what's your recommendation, that's just what your comment?
Well, what John asked is, is how should we deal with this? So, well, you should deal with this as any other request to continue an applicant, correct.
Yeah, okay. It's that simple.
Because there's nothing else in front of you. There is not a request to change applicants at this point, they don't have another applicant at this point. Um, so I, I don't see any reason for treating it differently than any other request to continue.
Is the continuance open-ended?
Yeah.
Well, no, you need to continue to a date, sir.
Okay, that's what I thought. This sounded pretty open-ended.
But I'm, see, I'm confused.
Yep.
Does this mean that you're coming back with additional information?
I don't want to preclude Kevy or anyone else from coming back with additional information. Because I recognize, and you guys have been very clear, you have open items that would require additional information.
So, sorry.
I just have one question for Paul, is that you made a, a comment earlier about, um, if a decision is to leave it too open-ended for too long, that there could be a constructive affirmation?
That, that would, that would be if the board, um, chose to keep the hearing open over the objection of the applicant. So when this isn't, the, the applicant... So this isn't, the applicant is stating, I want the hearing to remain open, so that's not going to be an issue.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Would it be appropriate, or is it your plan, to continue to close up the loopholes that we perceive are in the permit now? Tie up the loose ends while you're waiting for DEP and while you're on the hunt for, you know, another partner?
I think it's hard for us to commit to anything right now. It's hard for us to commit to anything right now. We did frankly come in with, you know, the hope, false hope, that we were going to be able to close with you guys, so we're going to feed you and lick our wounds.
I presume if you go back to the state and find that in fact your May 11th deadline was not a hard and fast deadline, and that you have another month, or two months, or whatever it is, that you'll still be in the process.
I might be too embarrassed to come back. I might be too embarrassed to come back.
John's yelling at him.
Sure, sure, that's a possibility.
Right, so at this point, you should not presume that they won't be Borrego back in front of you when you continue this for.
So when we continue this to, let's say, do you ever, when would you like this continued to, KB? I mean, I'm now looking more to you, right?
Yeah, I mean, I think that either way, we need to continue this. We have to answer DEP. That's going to take time.
That'll take two months.
That's going to take at least two months. So, I mean, at a minimum, whether it's Borrego, it's somebody else, we would have to continue this two months to at least get through DEP.
So you want to go through the process and just hope that you can somehow hook up with somebody who's got a better financial situation?
Not hope, it's just.
I mean, I do think you don't want to have this just remain open-ended.
No. So that's why.
I don't think two months is.
When we're continuing, I don't know what we're.
Given the state of the proceedings before DEP to date, I don't think two months is an unreasonable period of time to wait for them to finish. So, and I think if you continue it for 60 days, you come back, you reassess.
So do we also want to?
I would think at that point, you would want to see an applicant here in front of you.
An applicant here in front of us.
Who is a solar developer.
And the other issues that we have raised, such as the landscape plan and the O&M plan, haven't been addressed.
Right.
Now, you don't, I understood that you don't intend to address those between now and two months from now, whenever.
I think that's up to KB and Steve and I.
You probably don't know at this point.
Yeah, I mean, at this point.
That safe to say?
I think it's safe to say that it's not a big ask that you guys have made.
It's not a what?
It's not a large ask to correct the O&M or correct the landscape. So I would imagine that if it's Borrego that's in front of you again, or whoever's in front of you next, they're sure going to know what you guys are going to be able to see.
Okay.
So I would expect the next time to see something in response.
I'm taking that as a no, then really, that you won't be, you won't be doing anything on this that involves us for at the very least two months.
Well, no, they will be.
They won't be presenting to us.
No, but they will present in two months, in two months.
Yes, they will do whatever they.
If that's the question, yes, behind the scenes, we'd likely do it.
You will be working on it, so two months from now, we're able to sit down and hopefully wrap it up.
That's correct.
If you're here in two months, or somebody, you know.
They want to hear from the audience.
I presume that we're, would entertain an extension. I don't know.
Maybe before, unless you're delegating, I was going to open it up to the audience in general to hear any comments that you may have and making sure you all understood what, okay. Mr. Lawyer.
Thank you, Jeff Roloff, for a few of the neighbors. As to the procedural point, I guess I would just question whether two months is realistic. I mean, if you're really looking for somebody to come in and present how they've resolved the DEP situation, what the new plan is with landscaping and everything else, given what I've heard, I think it's unrealistically too soon. As much as I don't want this process dragged out forever, we also don't want to have to make plans to be here in July, and then August, and then September, and every time we get here, find out that there's still all these open issues. So I guess I'd urge the board to think about kicking it out a little bit further. In the meantime, staff can be in touch with the team, the developers' team, and get some feeling for whether anything's actually being done or not.
Mr. Chairman. You all share that? Alicia, you'd like it longer?
Well, my concern, my concern is that we have had a stormwater analysis peer reviewed back in 2014, and it hasn't been right. And it keeps kicking the can down the road. I mean, Tracy can speak to what hurricanes, what she sees in the stormwater issue, but this project that's before you now is going to significantly change. You know that. So I think that the developer can, I think this project should just go away, and then when they have another one, they can come back and start all over again. I mean, I don't understand why this project has to remain open. It's a significant, significant change. I don't know how Jeff feels about that.
Well, I do think that's an option for the board, right? You allow withdrawal without prejudice, so they don't get stuck with that two-year freeze period or inability to come back. You can also reincorporate into the new record information that's been presented. You may also have issues with voting, eligible voting members, if this gets dragged out too long. So I think it's a, I think it is a real option, is to just withdraw it and come back once they have somebody lined up.
I don't, I think that's, you know, I understand what they're trying to say. And I think outside of here, I think there have been some recommendations for some changes regarding solar in the town from selectmen. So, you know, the reality is, we'd like to continue it, whether it's Borrego, somebody else. I think, you know, it's our job to present and get you the answers so you can approve this. Allow us to, allow me, as landowner, to do my due diligence to get you those answers, right? Give me the opportunity. I understand, you know, their concerns. I'm also, I am from town as well. So give me that opportunity. I think that's fair. And if I can't do it, I can't do it. You know, I think it's, I have to work hard to, and there's a lot of due diligence on my side to prove that. And I understand what's at stake, and, you know, I think it's fair to give you the opportunity.
If I understand what Alicia says properly, I don't think, you know, somehow I don't think it's fair to make people kind of mess up their summer. This is when people go on vacations, this is when they leave town, and so forth, when there's a reasonable chance that it could be extended a little further. I would ask, is it a big deal to make it, you know, continue it? Yes, continue it, but continue it to the end of the summer? And then I would ask, if things fall together, can it be pushed back to an earlier date? I don't know.
Mr. Chairman. The reason I said 60 days is because I think you'll have some better of an understanding of where this is going at this point. DEP should have ruled by the end of 60 days. Borrego, if they're going to be out, will be out within the next 60 days. So if they're coming back with somebody else, they should have them by that point in time. I understand the request of not messing up people's summer, but I also don't want to leave this hanging over the neighborhood's head forever, right? I think you want some sort of final resolution. With regard to a withdrawal without prejudice, certainly a way the board can go, but the board can't require that.
The stats all over again, does it not?
Well, I think Jeff was right, that the board can take notice of the material that's already been submitted, re-include that into the record. You could have an initial presentation that covers all of that, but you can't force an applicant to withdraw.
Got it. Here's the major concern I've got on whether or not we do a continuance or withdrawal without prejudice. And that is, Peter has missed two sessions, so he cannot step in. George has missed one session we had to scrap last time because we couldn't afford to have him miss another one. If all of it, you've missed one.
I think a withdrawal without prejudice.
You've missed one.
I think a withdrawal without prejudice would be a good approach, but again, it's up to the applicant.
So, you see where I'm going?
I mean. But it's up to the applicant, correct?
Correct.
It's up to you.
So what they're saying, KB, what John is telling you is that you may be in a situation where if this is continued, and you have another member miss another hearing.
You don't get a vote.
You don't have five votes anymore. You have four votes. And if you have more than one member miss, you have three votes, and you can't get an approval because you need four.
So what's gone on for so long?
If that happens, can you withdraw it that time?
Yes, yes. You could entertain that at that point.
Can I ask a?
Go ahead, Jim.
Go ahead, Jim.
I don't have a legal background at all, but why can't we just say no? A simple no. And then if this project comes back, rising like Phoenix, they just submit again, and we start the whole process all over again. And they can use the research that's already been done.
Under the statute, there is a two-year period where they're barred from filing a similar application after a denial.
But that doesn't happen if they withdraw without prejudice.
If they withdraw without prejudice, they're not subject to that.
I have a proposal, which would be to continue, as Paul suggested, for 60 days. Give KB an opportunity to regroup, figure out how, where he's going to go, how he's, what's going to happen. Is he going to pursue it? Is Borrego in or out? That type of thing. We may not have the answers to all of our questions at that point in time, but at least we should know in which direction we're headed. It's, granted, it's the middle of the summer, but at that point, we can figure out how much more time we need and what's reasonable.
And if by that point, DEP still hasn't acted, they can always request to continue and have to show up.
Yeah, I mean, I think we, a lot has happened tonight, and my sense is that the applicant probably needs time to digest what has happened and what their next move is, and how best to proceed. So I would like not to see it go out too far, in case there's more information on that front.
I want to keep, want to keep the pressure on, because this process has to end at some point.
So, so I guess, so Paul, give me your vision of what might happen in two months.
Well, first of all, if Borrego feels that they're, you know, they're.
Gonzo.
Well, if Borrego feels that they still have the ability, you know, to get their subsidy, and they stay in, and you've heard from DEP, then maybe at that point, you're ready to close the hearing.
Right.
If you've got all the, and all the other information you've asked for has been submitted. Or if they show up and Borrego's out, and the property owner is telling you, I don't know where we are with regards to somebody else to come over and take it over, you might look at it at that point and say, well, you know, we need to close the hearing and render a decision, because it's just, we can't leave it open forever.
Okay, thanks. Tracy, you said you wanted to say something?
I just wanted to mention that.
Name and address.
Tracy Peter, Peter Environmental Consulting. The process is that the ball is in Borrego's lap, and he has so many days. I think it's between 40 and 70 days. And then from there, DEP will issue a decision after the abutters reply to the new information. So we're talking probably a little more than two months, in my opinion. Probably be about two months.
And my understanding is.
But the ball is actually in Borrego's lap.
That's a good point. My understanding is, nothing has been submitted yet.
No, nothing has been submitted yet, since April 28th, and.
Here's the thing I'd like to say. If we did submit something, it wouldn't take that long. It might take a couple of weeks to put together, submit it, the, they can comment.
She'd be, oh, she's standing up.
Yeah.
But I wasn't done yet.
Thank you, Jane.
But the important thing is, it's required a redesign. It's an extensive.
Yeah, you got to be there, Ross. It's not recorded.
There's a lot of information that's due. It's going to take time.
Okay, thank you.
Right, and I think it would take a couple of weeks to put the plans and do the field work to get the information together to submit to DEP, and we would do that. And then they would have their time to comment on what we submitted. And DEP took so long last time that I think they would be quicker to get an answer back.
I don't mind saying it was unconscionable, in my opinion, how long it took.
It was, and they know that. We, they apologize, they apologize. So I think this time, you'll come back in a much shorter time.
But that obviously is going to be dependent upon when you submit the information to them.
Right, but I think the process will go a lot faster.
And whether or not you're still involved to submit that information to them, so.
That's true.
And we have a period as well, that is about 35 days.
Right. Which is why I think that a hearing in 60 days allows you to see where we are in this process. And I think that if at that time, you see that there's been no information submitted to DEP, to go forward to getting that, you're going to have to evaluate what your response is at that point.
Okay. Anyone else in the na, yeah. Jeff?
Just procedurally, I'm not objecting to the 60-day things. What I would want to avoid, though, is showing up here that night and not being clear as to what's going to happen that night. So sometimes what a board will do is say, you know, two weeks prior to that hearing, we want a written letter from the applicant explaining where you are.
I think that's fine.
Right?
Sure.
What are you planning to present at the hearing?
I'm assuming to you.
So we can be prepared to respond to it.
Get a letter to ahead of the time, so that everybody knows what you're going to be presenting. That's fine.
That's fair.
And I think the board should be copied on any submittal to DEP as well, so you know that it's been submitted.
Greg?
I just want to express my displeasure with all of this, right? This has been going on for two years, okay? And you say, KB, now I have to do my diligence, okay? And we've been waiting for information for a long time, okay?
Been part of this for two years as well.
I understand, but we haven't gotten the information. This is the first time you're committing to saying, I have to do my diligence now.
I have a team that works for me, that, so.
Well, they obviously didn't serve you very well.
Well, they don't consent to all the issues. Stand up. Stand up.
So that's all I wanted to say. Okay, I understand it's up to the board, but we still are neighbors, okay? And the visual aspect, okay, you know, has not been closed, obviously. The property value aspect, I believe, and everybody in the neighborhood believes, hasn't been closed. And you're up here talking like, everything is pretty much closed. I've heard a couple of comments, okay? But I think we still need to have a discussion on the property values, okay? You've brought up that you have some concerns. You guys stood in my house, and one panel, okay? And you looked at it out of my window, okay? And to your point, John, if you can see it, I don't know what they can do, okay, to block that. But what's going to happen if the insects get to the trees? What happens if you get excessive flooding in there? It kills the trees. I understand, you know, that's for the DEP to decide that piece of it on the wetlands, okay? But on the trees, I think there's a lot more that needs to be done on making this not visible. I just don't know how you do it. You're going to cut down a whole tree line, okay? And we saw one panel out of hundreds of panels that are going to go up. So I think everybody's seen, you know, many of the board members were in my house.
We understand that.
Okay, thank you.
We understand you can see it. That's why when we saw it, we said, we need to have 24/7, 365 days a year.
We're to have what?
We need to have it covered all the time, from the time that it's built.
Without exception.
Not, without exception. That's our position. So we agree with you, Greg. All right. Anybody else would like to say something? Okay.
Martha, do you have a date 60 days old?
I'm just looking, so that would be, July 6th would be the first, the first regular meeting in July, or the 20th.
20th would be better. I think July 6th, everybody's away.
I'm away. 20th I could do. Jim, you know if you can do the 20th?
20th of July.
20th of July. Peter?
So far.
Okay. John?
I'm good. Yeah, oh, yeah. Neighbors?
Neighbors, 20th of July.
It's our birthday. We have the same birthday.
Bring a cake.
Same year.
Great.
Same day, same year.
And we work at the same place. It's not so big.
Is that right?
My sister's birthday, too.
That's pretty cool.
Anyway, even so, you have to be here. All right, Monica?
Yeah, I move that, at the specific request of the applicant, that this public hearing continue until July 20 at 7:15 PM.
Any discussion from board members on the motion? Oh, can I have a second? Now, any discussion about it? All right. All those in favor, what?
Two weeks, you're going to do the two weeks, you have to make a motion for that, the letter, the note going out two weeks prior, or no? The note from the applicant?
To request the applicant to submit the application. You've already required that.
Oh, put that in here? No, we don't need to put it in that.
It's not part of the motion to continue.
Thank you. Okay, ready? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Any opposed? No. Okay, that's what we're doing. Thank you all again.
Good. Yeah, I know it.